Called order to the city council work session for C D V Scram Forks for Tuesday, May 25th, 2021 is now five o'clock with city clerk, please call.
Mary Steve Gander.
Here.
Council president Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council vice president Tim Rianpel.
Here.
Council members Clarence Fetter.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Mark Demers.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Does term quorum, number one, consider accepting the reported feasibility of street improvements on Sawgrass Court. Mr. Emery.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council. So we've completed the feasibility study for the street improvements on Sawgrass Court within the Waters Edge Third Edition. The utilities and the curb and gutter aggregate driving surface, all of that was installed back in 2007 when the utilities and such went in there. So, you know, basically that street's been sitting with gravel for about 14 years. You know, typically when we kind of go through that process, it's still all, you know, any settlement, that type of stuff to take place. So we, you know, we like not to do that paving, maybe for a year or two, but I think we're well beyond that. So hopefully, any settlement that was going to take place should have taken place. So with that, you know, the proposed project would include basically just removing the existing aggregate surfacing and putting in concrete paving. Upon kind of review of that area, there is right at the entrance of Sawgrass Court and Valley Gulf Way there, there is some broken concrete panels and some broken curb and gutter that we'd probably just want to replace, you know, being we're kind of tying right into that area. So we'd want to get that probably fixed. And then also upon further review, on a couple of the driveways there, looks like they got, you know, some settlement in their driveways. And then also how the driveway and the curb was poured, we again, we got that joint right in the flow line of the curb there, which we've been trying to eliminate. So again, the thought was, you know, so we do the paving and then a year or two later we start to have issues. Now we're dealing with not only the curb and gutter in the driveway, but the street panel also. So we'd kind of into our estimate, kind of figured that we would make those appropriate repairs as part of the project. So right now, you know, we're estimating the total project cost at about $168,630. Of that, we're, right now, we're estimating about $157,000 to be assessed. And kind of like we've done on other projects, basically that gravel that'll be pulled out, that'll become property of the C D V Scram Forks. So we're not assessing that, which is similar to what we've done on all the other projects like this. And then also David and I did discuss it, those concrete panels right at the very beginning where we tied in, you know, we thought that little bit of concrete panels, curb and gutter, I think it was 20 feet of curb and gutter, you know, city could just pick that up as, you know, with their maintenance funds or whatever. So we didn't assess that. So that's why, you know, right now, there's a difference of about $11,000 there between total project cost and what's being assessed. I think we could, you know, up to you guys too, you know, if we want to have any discussion as far as, you know, the two driveways, that curb and gutter, you know, I mean, the residents have kind of been assessed for it one time. So, you know, do we want to hit them again, I guess? But, and I do have some preliminary numbers too, based on, you know, potentially even eliminating that from the assessments. But, so right now, based on, you know, preliminary numbers, we're estimated in the front end benefit to be 22466 per foot, per front foot. And then the end benefit would be about 7489. And I did include a map in the packet, just to kind of show who would get front ends, you know, who would get an end benefit. Also include kind of an itemized cost breakdown of everything. So, you know, really, I guess the next step would be to, you know, approve it at council and look at setting an improvement, you know, setting up the improvement hearing. So I guess with that, I can answer any questions if you, you know, are interested in how, you know, pulling out some of those other costs from the project may affect assessments. We can kind of discuss that too. So.
Have you had any feedback from the residents there yet?
Haven't had any feedback other than the fact that, you know, they all signed the petition.
Have they seen these yet? These numbers? Have they seen these numbers yet?
They haven't seen the numbers yet, no. That would all be sent out with the notice of hearing, which we have roughly, we're estimating June 22nd, right?
Yes. And if this is approved by council next week, then all this is would be sent out?
Down to 15 or 20 year.
What's that?
Assessment timeframe.
I think typically on paving, we've been 20.
The council can decide a little bit differently. Yes, we've been 20.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. I didn't know if they asked for a certain time period or not. And also, I guess during that hearing, are we going to have, what maybe would it be broken down for them per year? I guess if you're going to have that assessment.
With the assessment. Yeah.
So you'll have that.
No, that'd be the total, but what the per, what it would, if it's, if it's amortized out for 20 years, what the yearly assessment.
Oh, I can figure that out, yes. I don't have that at the moment.
Probably be helpful for them. So I'm assuming option of them wanting, they could pay it off right away or they can go to 20 years, so just so they can have that. Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Larson.
Question on the curb and gutter for lots six and seven in particular. If I understand right, we're talking about new curb and gutter through there. Are we pouring that so that when those lots are sold and driveways are poured, we don't have any additional rework to take the curb out and make the driveway connection?
Like on lots six and seven, those have full curb and gutter right now. You know, if, if we had a master plan, we knew where that driveway was going to be, you know, we could, as part of this project, we could pull out the curb, put in the drive over curb and take care of it. But, you know, the problem is until it's developed, we don't know where those driveways are going to be. So that's just something, you know, whoever develops those would have to probably just, you know, tear that curb and gutter out at that time.
Yeah. It'd be ideal if there's, you know, in a perfect world, there was a developer there and we knew where that driveway was going to land or, or at least we could take a, you know, best guess and not, not have these people incur that cost twice, you know?
And like on lots four and five, that's where we do have some of those, you can see there's settlement in the driveways. And then when you look at the curb too, like I said, some of that curb hasn't been, you know, completed how we're trying to complete it nowadays, kind of our standards. So, so that's, on four and five is where we have, kind of right now, we're showing that driveway replacement, curb and gutter replacement. And I did include in your packet kind of a itemized cost breakdown per lot, so you can kind of see that. I did roughly figure it, you know, again, if we were to pull out of the assessments, if we were to pull out the driveways and that curb and gutter, kind of right there, it would be a savings of roughly, you know, just depending on the size of the lot, but anywhere from about a savings of an additional 1,700 to, you know, for the largest lot, it'd be a savings of about 3,700 if we were to, you know, pull out some of those costs and the city would just kind of absorb some of those.
Mayor.
The, the curb is poured out solid there. So when they would do the cut, they'd pay it once, right? So they're not putting the curb in now, it's already there. Yeah, that's cool.
That's correct.
Historically, I don't know that we've ever tried to come in and offset costs like for driveway approaches or any of that. It'd be nice if this one could kind of stand alone and fund itself, it seems to me, unless, again, categorically, if we say this is what we're going to do, because there's, our council president, he likes to do it the same every time. He doesn't want to try to, you know, go in and do like small part here and small part there. He wants to be more systematic about it. And I can't really disagree with that. So unless that's something historically that we've done all the time, then I'd say this one could stand alone from a funding standpoint and, and then be distributed to the project.
I think kind of following past practices, what we've done, that's kind of how it's laid out right now. So we can take it to the improvement hearing as such.
Just because he did live on that street when he grew up either, that's why. 20th.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we plan on having the assessment hearing.
June 22nd.
Pre, pre.
Well, actually, we'll have the, we'll hold the improvement hearing and then I guess depending on how that goes, then you guys, if everything goes good, they're in favor, then you guys would authorize, let's say, to move ahead with plans and specs. And then once we get numbers, I think if the numbers, you know, would come in, let's say below our estimate, you know, we can just move ahead with construction and then do the assessment hearing at the end. Or if you want, you know, we can do that, kind of that final assessment hearing, get that completed and then approve the bids too. It's kind of just depending on whatever.
I mean, typically lately, we've been doing the assessments prior to.
By awarding the project.
Right. I'm not convinced that that's the best way. I mean, it might be the best way from a, from the standpoint of dealing with objections, but for cost to the city, I'm not always, but on a small project like this, it probably works. One of my concerns is if we go through and we have this estimated breakdown and then we get, say, what I don't want to see happen is like all of a sudden some, someone comes in with a low bid, but the bid items are skewed and all of a sudden they've put a bunch of money on the salvage or they put a bunch of money on, you know, concrete removal. And then all of a sudden, the city's on the hook for more. So what, I mean, are we going to commit to like the price ratio on some of this stuff? Whether or not the bid comes in, whether or not the bids come in above, or lower or not, but you know as well as I do, contractors can put different things on different things, right? So what I don't want to see happen is while we're kind of saying, well, there's 10, $11,000, that's going to be the city cost, but all of a sudden it comes out to 25,000 because the way someone lays out a bid.
And I think all we can do there, Mark, is I mean, we don't know. That's going to happen, I think, just in our review of bids, you know, then we can kind of review the bids, see if we have any of that, you know, skewed unit prices, maybe with one item or another and.
Well, I guess my point is, is it has happened where then all of a sudden that money says, well, we'll give that, we'll push that back to the assessment. Really, it's like, well, we're just doing it based on what it costs. The only other way would be to partial, parcel out those portions that are the actual city's, you know, thing and have them as a set alone deal. I don't know if it's worth doing that or not, but I just don't want to see us come back and say, well, we were thinking it's going to be 10, $11,000, that the city was going to have to pay and now it's 20.
I was going to say that.
Mayor would love that though. Anybody else have any questions? Looking good, Emery. Looks good.
Thank you.
Thanks. Move on, number two, consider setting rates for 2021 pool season. Reed.
All right. Thank you, council president Holstead. So our Parks Recreation Commission had a meeting last week, Wednesday, and one of the agenda items we looked at was the rates for our swimming pool for this upcoming summer that is set to open. The pool's set to open on Saturday, June 5th. The rates, we have not had an increase for a couple of years. I think three years ago, we increased them. So we've had these, the rates we currently have for two seasons. And the commission made a recommendation that we would raise basically the two primary day passes, the children's day pass of ages five to 17 and the adult pass, $1 each. And then for the family swim time, the family of four from $8 to $10, so a $2 increase. We decided in the discussion to leave the season passes as they have been from previous years, largely due to the fact that we have had a really strong pre-sale of season passes already, as we've sold quite a number. And rather than change the price kind of partway through, we felt we'd best justify just to leave that price as it is for this year. But we did talk at the meeting about creating a 10-pass punch card at a rate of $35 as an alternative option to people that maybe don't want to buy the full season pass. And there's a little value in that, rather than going and paying cash each time you walk up, if they, if they know they're going to go often enough to use that. So with those proposed fees, using last year's attendance numbers, it projects out to about a $9,000 increase in income. And that's using the 2020 season. Remember, we had some COVID restrictions and it was a little bit of a shortened season because we opened a few weeks late with the COVID shutdown we were under in June. So that has the potential to be even more than that this year with that increase. So that would be our recommendation looking ahead to this pool season.
Any questions? Reed. I see none, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Move on, number three, consider the request to hire a construction manager for recreation facility improvement project. Reed, again.
All right. Thank you again, Mr. President. So just a little, I think summary and background on the process we followed in the construction management timeline through this whole planning process. You all recall back when we had our strategic planning meeting in February, we discussed a few, the timeline of kind of the meetings and events that we wanted to follow and some strategy to how to keep this project progressing forward the way we'd all like. One of those things discussed at that time was to add a construction manager into the process earlier than later. And understanding that this may be a project that the city could find good value in and using a delivery method for the project that included a construction manager at risk. And one of the big benefits of a construction manager at risk is that we would have the opportunity, when we get to a project point, to be offered a guaranteed maximum price on the project. As they go through the design, they'd create, the construction manager working with the design team would create an initial opinion of cost that we'd bring along with a pre-design back to the city council for kind of an update and an ability to move forward with a pre-design and authorize the design team to start working on a schematic. And ultimately, once the, the final design and schematic was put together, that construction manager would look at that design and be able to give us a price that they'd, they'd say we would be able to hold to a guarantee. That would include any of the contingencies or change order type of things that they may find. And if there was anything left over in any type of those contingencies, when the project was concluded, those would be returned by contract would be returned to the city. If for some reason there were unforeseen change orders that the construction manager did not expect to see or wasn't aware of contractually, if the contract went above their guaranteed maximum price, it would be at their expense. And that's, there's a little bit of contract work that would need to go into that, but essentially that's the kind of the quick summary of what that would mean from a construction manager at risk. So we, going back to the timeline, we advertised in early April, put out a request for qualifications for a construction manager. I included in your packet, the description of that RFQ of the details that we were working with. Mr. Murphy and I met pretty extensively on that and putting that together. And we ultimately, we had four firms that submitted their qualifications and a proposal. The fee structure that they submitted, we asked for a fee kind of in two separate ways. One, a flat fee or an initial contracted fee for work through November 2022, assuming that we would vote for a local sales tax at that time. That's kind of been the deadline we've been following on the contract, similar to that with J L G. And, and for the second purpose of that is ultimately understanding that we don't, one, we don't know exactly what our project looks like. And two, we don't know the total scope of it yet, even from a dollar amount standpoint. So to be able, we don't want to enter into a contract, a full construction manager contract on a percentage based fee when we don't know what the project is going to entail. So we have a flat rate and then we ask them to submit what their proposed percentage rate fee would be when the contract comes to fruition. That piece of it, the percentage piece is negotiable still as we go forward, assuming that the project would be in a 13 to 20 million dollar range as we listed it in the RFQ. That would be the fee that, that they would propose. If the scope of that project changes at all one way or another, there could be an opportunity for us to discuss what that fee is and bring it either up or down, depending upon which way the project funding or the project scope goes. So in the interview process, we used a committee of three people. It was myself, Judd Stouse is on our building committee and council member Larson was kind enough to join us. In the Minnesota state statute for the process to use a construction manager, it asks for a three-person selection committee. And it asked for one of those people to have construction management experience. So in a lot of cases, that was why we asked Mr. Larson to join us, because we're fortunate that professionally, he's in the construction management field. And Mr. Stouse has, has some construction background in his private business as well. So I think we had a really strong committee. We had J L G represent as well with us to, to be there to ask questions and provide us input if we had questions for J L G, but they did not participate in our scoring at all. In the scoring process, the four finalists, I will say, I'm very excited with the finalists that we had. All four, I think, would do a great job with the project. I think they all have different strengths that maybe cater to this project, one, one more than the other. One area that we spent a lot of time as a committee discussing was this phase, this first phase we're in from November, through November 2022, that we would call the pre-referendum phase or the pre-design phase. And how the construction manager that we're looking for would really complement what we already have J L G under contract to do. And that in a lot of ways guided us in some, in some aspects in selecting the construction manager that we, we would like to propose for approval. We think that they, construction engineers being that firm that we would propose, we think that they are going to be a really strong complement to what we already have J L G under contract for. And when I say that and refer to that, J L G, remember, we're already contracted in the scope of work to have them lead our pre-referendum effort. If we need to have community forums, if we need to prepare any type of information for us as a city to be able to get out, what does a sales tax mean to our taxpayers? How does that relate in comparison to a property tax perspective? Budget, budget conversations, concept design work? We already have a contract with J L G to lead that effort. And so construction engineers, I think, really will complement the work that J L G is under contract to do very well from a cost estimating perspective and from a construction, a building, a building of constructability is the word I'm looking for, from a constructability perspective in that they have a really strong local knowledge of our arenas specifically. And, and we understand going into this, that our arena projects are going to be ones that are very largely renovations or remodels or retrofits, potentially adding on to old buildings. And, and those are a few of the areas we think that construction engineers maybe set themselves ahead in their construction experience and that they've done a lot of work in kind of remodeling and renovating facilities, whereas another construction manager maybe has more experience building a stick build or a brand new building. So a few, just a few kind of in, in comment, things that we, we felt like construction ears, construction engineers really help set themselves above, above and beyond on. But again, we had four really qualified firms, four great interviews. And I think just in summarizing it all, I'm really excited for us to be able to have the opportunity to bring construction engineers on at this time, early on in this pre-designed process, to be able to have them be work hand in hand with our building committee and with J L G to make sure that we have a project that we think is great for our community, but also stays within those budget parameters that we're going to be setting.
Do you have any questions at this time for Mr. Reed? Dale.
Thank you. Reed, you did a lot of talking, a little bit of time there. Is this project manager, this money, are they being, is this going to get, will they be paid for this right away, this part? I mean, or is this something that as you go down the line, you'll pay them a little at a time? Or, you know, I'm asking, I mean, is it a?
If I understand you're asking, are we going to invoice them for the full amount upfront or pay over time? I don't, I'd have to ask for clarification on that. We didn't get into that. I didn't ask that specific question on payment. They would certainly, the work completed between now and November of 2022, regardless of the outcome of a vote, if it went to a community vote of a sales tax, they would expect to be compensated in full for that amount regardless.
That'd probably answer my question right there. So they'll be paid regardless.
Yeah. For this amount.
If something happens or something doesn't happen.
Correct. Yeah. And it would be for work, sorry to interrupt you, it'd be for the work that they completed in that timeframe. Yeah.
So where I'm having the problem is, is it seems to me that we're kind of putting the cart before the horse here. We really don't know what we're going to do yet. We don't know how much money we have to work with. And we don't know if it'll even be approved, any of it. So is this money that you want to pay them, is that coming out of Parks and Rec budget or where's that coming out of?
So it is, at this point in time, it's, Carla has set up a project budget that is just all the, the bills that we're accumulating with either for J L G, for the fundraising study we've done or for this one, has set up a project budget. Ultimately, it would come back to the Park and Rec department if there wasn't a budget or a project. If it, if a project follows through, whatever project that looks like, then those funds would be applied to, or those expenses would be applied to the project itself. Yeah.
Because it seems like we're bringing an awful lot of people on board for all this stuff. And I, I guess, maybe we need it, maybe we don't, but my, my concern is we're paying out all this money and not knowing where we're really going with it. I guess that's the way I feel anyway, because I haven't got a lot of information on any of that. And that kind of bothers me that we're, we're hiring, keep hiring all these people to, to oversee this and oversee that and.
Yeah.
I'm kind of concerned about that.
Yeah. I would, I would say that I think that this work at this point in time is incredibly valuable to whatever decisions we're going to make going forward and what a project looks like. And, and when I say what a project looks like, I mean, the project scope, is it going to be just simple repairs to the current facilities we have or is it going to be renovations and potential additions to arenas? That's a broad range, you know, from a couple million dollars to maybe many million dollars, depending upon how much we decide to tackle. And if, if we go back in our memory, back to 2019, when we asked J L G to conduct the initial feasibility study, at that time, we, we asked them to study adding a new arena to the Civic Center and retrofitting the VFW arena. And we did that process with really no community input ahead of time. We, we went through a strategic planning meeting with the city council and, and that idea was put on the table. And we hired J L G to look at it, to do the condition assessment. It was valuable in learning what our deferred maintenance cost is in the arenas, but we didn't get any community input on what should the project looks like. So then after the fact, when the price came back at 24 million dollars for that project and we showed our community, there were a lot of questions from the community and, you know, what are you going to do and why does it have to cost that much? And why are you thinking about adding on to the Civic Center instead of tearing it all down and building something brand new? And so to me, I would say that this work at this point is incredibly valuable to that because now we're following a process. We are, we have the right consultants on board. We're going to the community through this process, through a building committee. You'll see in our timeline that in the next couple of months, September, October, we have scheduled community forums lined up to be able to take our work we've done so far to the community to test it. We're using our fundraising consultant right now, out interviewing people in the community on a smaller sample size, recognizing it's 50 to 60 interviews, but it's still interviewing community members to get their input and test the project. So it's, it's very valuable and it'll, it'll really help guide us going forward. The other part of it, and that's the big piece of why we have through both the fundraising study and in this RFQ for the construction manager, asked for it not to exceed budget. Because I agree with you, if we didn't have that not to exceed budget, I think all of these construction managers could have come in and it could have been twice as much as what it was, what their proposed price was. But by us doing that, we put a little bit of responsibility back on them and saying, you know, we don't have a project, we, we recognize that, we don't know what our project is yet. We need to be responsible with our dollars. We, it's, we feel it's valuable work, but we need to manage how much we spend in it. And I, I believe that by having that fixed fee or asking them to stick to a fixed fee, it helps us control and understand what we're spending at this point. We're certainly investing in it. I recognize that, wholeheartedly your concern, but we're, we're controlling that by telling them that we need a fixed rate to understand what it's going to cost. it's going to cost.
Mayor?
I sure agree that this is a good move at this time. I think by bringing in the project manager, from an engineering standpoint, we can start to drill down on cost per everything that we're considering. You know, the architects are really good at coming up with a variety of elements, and these folks are going to be a lot better at coming up with the cost of building each one of those elements. Then we go back to our people and get to their priorities of these several possibilities at these price points. You know, what are our top priorities? And then I even picture us walking in to testify to the legislature. You know, eventually, we have to convince them also. And the more of this detailed information we can have in the process that we've gone through, you know, they're going to need to know, do you have all the community buy-in? And they really want to know what's the regional impact of this. Over and over, when we were down there, if you're going to do a sales tax, it has to be of a regional benefit outside of your immediate city. So through this whole process, we're going to figure all of that out. And I do feel better walking in, testifying to the legislature with all these ducks in a row, even down to getting down to costs and whatnot. So, thank you.
Mr. Reed, Bill?
I like the idea of what we're going through, because we went through the same process. I was on the committee when we built the Icon Rinks. And what it gave us is the information that we needed to proceed and let the people know, this is what it's going to cost, this is what we're doing. It was all the correct steps that we took. I think, Reed, you're going about it right, or doing what we should do. So, that's it.
Mr. Larson?
Yeah, thank you. I also recommend that we do approve this at our next meeting here. Really, hiring a construction manager at this point is really that the city's doing our due diligence here. Because as we lead up to a vote, we're going to be making a promise here to our residents on what we're going to deliver with their dollars. And we have to have absolute confidence that what we show on that picture, on that flyer, is what we're going to build. And without a construction manager here on board to prove accurately what the cost of the design is, how to manage our construction risk, all of the other overhead costs here, I just don't think we could really ask our citizens to confidently vote. So, this is a critical part of this team that we're putting together here for this major capital project.
Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, it might be a question for Mr. Larson. Does that 3%, 3.5% CM fee seem ballparked to you?
It does.
Okay.
Anything else? Anybody else have anything? I see no questions.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Alrighty. We want to report, consider the request to purchase patrol SUV.
Thank you, Mr. President. This RCA stems back to last summer's budget discussions. As I'm sure you all recall, we were anticipating a budget shortfall, and thus, through the various cuts that all the departments had to make, we did wind up removing one of these squads from our final budget. As the audits are nearing completion, it looks like a much better picture than we had at that point in time. So I am bringing back to you a request to put that removed squad car back into the budget. I passed out a updated bid from Guardian, the bid that I had initially in the RCA was from about a year ago, and I do have that updated. And it's a slight increase in cost, about $400. Now, the total amount would now be $45,808.95.
Do you have any questions?
Sorry. I was just going to say, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Chief? See none, sir?
Thank you.
Number five, discussion on sewage and stormwater fees. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Council President. Again, this is something that the council has discussed previously. I believe we spoke, we did go through this here at the last work session. And we're bringing it back again. They wanted some additional information and a little bit more time to digest it. So, with that, the breakdown would be, again, the sanitary sewer, right now, we're proposing a $5 increase, which breaks down into $3 to cover costs and maintenance fund balance, excuse me, maintain fund balance, and $2 to increase for replacement projects. Storm sewer, $4 total, and $2 to increase to cover our costs and maintain a fund balance, our increasing costs, and $2 for increase for replacement projects. One of the questions that had been brought up was with the increase for the replacement projects for both the sanitary sewer and the storm sewer. Mr. Stordahl is here as well and can elaborate on that some. And I guess, as far as putting together a formal plan of what would be replaced, when, we have a general idea of it. We have what we estimate to do, but however, when reality hits, it's not always, we can't always follow that. We do have things that come up. We have projects that will change. So I guess, what we would need is some flexibility for the replacement projects, which is one of the reasons why we're asking for this increase, is having that money available does give us some room for when we do have items that come up, that, for example, that we would have the funds there to replace that and to fix those lines. So, I guess with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Stordahl. I know you've, I believe you spoke with some council members on this, and you've had some, a chance to put your thoughts together and elaborate a little bit more about how we would utilize this, and particularly, some of the unforeseen projects.
Thank you. Yeah, so, I guess what I would envision, it would be similar to how Water and Light does their water main projects. They have a list, as we do, of projects that need to take place in the next few years, prioritize the list of sanitary, stormwater projects, and have an idea, you know, planning out anywhere from, you know, a year to maybe 10, 15 years down the road, which projects we'd like to see. But in the meantime, like Mr. Murphy stated, there's a lot of variables that go with it. So, if we're to do a street project, and we already have a list of sanitary sewer projects for the next 10 years, but we have a street project, and let's say the fifth year that comes up, well, we could be flexible in our list there, too. So, we could replace that sanitary sewer as needed on that street, along with that funding. You know, some streets have sanitary sewer right down the center of the street, a lot of them do. Some don't, there are easements in the back, there's pipe differences in different streets. There are some projects where we wouldn't need to tear up the street, or it wouldn't matter, that we have, well, we have, what, three projects that we're looking forward to right now, of just relining projects. So, and then you have the one that pops up once in a while, where we just did some smoke testing on Monday, and found that a sanitary sewer and a storm sewer are connected somehow. We think there's a break there, we're going to be doing some televising and look at that. But if there was an issue with, you know, block law online or something like that, that we had to reline or dig up, obviously, that would be the priority and slip number one on the list. So, it'd give you a little leeway in which projects you were going to do, but you'd have an idea planned out, which ones are the most, that held the most priority.
Anybody have any questions? I think one of the questions that I have, let's say we have a project, are you going to be laying it out down the road? Let's say it's two years down the road. Are you going to be laying out, this is what we put in that fund already, this is what's going to be used out of that fund, we're going to reduce whatever costs that we incur, because we have this fund already? Is that what, the idea of how it's going to be resented? You know, let's say that we have councils five years down the road, that wasn't part of this decision, how they're going to react and look at it and make sure they're doing the right thing, too. But...
I would foresee that if we had a project that was, let's say, let's say we get $100,000 a year from these dollars, and we have a project that is not an emergency, but is like $180,000, then, you know, if that's the next on our priority list, and we save up for two years, we spend $180,000, we carry over the next $20,000 to the, you know, the next year, and so on and so forth. So we just plan accordingly as we move along. Emergency type projects, we already have some funds available for that, in our enterprise fund right now. So, you know, if we had a manhole collapse or something like that, we have money to cover that, to a certain extent, right now, for those type of projects. I don't know if that answered your question.
Do you have something to add to that, or...
Were you referencing maybe, um, street reconstruction projects or those kind of things? Okay. Okay. Yeah. Well, I guess, to answer that, I guess I'll, I'd asked the council president if he was alluding to the street reconstruction projects, if those would be included in that. And I believe it would. You know, if we have noticed that a street reconstruction project is coming up, and there are sanitary and storm sewer lines that are in there that would need to be updated, I think it would be a perfect way to meld those together and utilize that. So, I would see that being used as well. Again, it could be, depending on if anything comes up, what could be a priority. But yes, I would see that being used for that as well.
I understand we have to have a starting point on anything we do, anything that's gets changed or approved. So I just want to make sure that we're upfront to what we're going to do with it and how it's going to be handled. Yes, in the past, you know, I've had some angst of taking some funds from somewhere else to pay for something that, you know, offsets the specials against an area. You know, the mayor alluded to that earlier. I like to not have that piecemeal together of certain things. I think we should do everything across the board the same way. And I understand, like I said, we have to have a starting point somewhere. But just let's make sure we're, again, throw it back to the mayor transparent on what we're doing. I'll hand it over to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, if it does, any of it find its way to any kind of street reconstruction, it would be done systematically. So you'd do it the same on every project, if that's what we decided to do. And it would be done just on that rare occasion that you did a street reconstruction. We do those about every five or 10 years. And so, the majority of these annual uses would be exactly to the priorities that Mr. Stordahl has indicated. And just for clarification, if someone could weigh in, it could be Mr. Murphy, it could be Mr. Galstead. You know, these enterprise funds, by statute, have to be used just for those certain things that they're identified for. So there'd be no way that the city could receive these funds and divert them off in some other direction. They have to be used for exactly what the identified purpose, storm sewer, sanitary sewer, and for sure, that's what they would be used for. And that's correct, in the use of those funds?
Yes. Yeah. There's always, you know, you can take a little bit of liberty as far as if it has an effect on it or whatever. But yes, it has to be to benefit that particular utility.
Thanks.
And I agree with that. The other thing that I would suggest, if anybody is concerned about how those funds are going to be used, or councils in the future, maybe put together a fair and specific detail policy that you can add into it.
I can't hear you, Ron.
Nobody wants to hear me, anyway. But I was going to say, I agreed with David, and then I said if there was a concern regarding how it is going to be used by future councils, put together a fairly detailed policy that would go along with the sewer fund, the wastewater fund, whatever you would want to be calling it, utility fund, so that going forward, everybody understands what that policy is.
Kind of like trails, use money for trails, and doesn't get used money for trails. Mr. Larson?
Yeah, thank you. You know, I'm interested in seeing this kind of laid out in a spreadsheet form to kind of understand the data and the, where the dollars, these, how much of our system kind of gets updated over time with this set aside. I'm not really interested in what project happens on year two or year three. That's for a different conversation. But what I'd like to see is how much of our system is slowly being updated over time. We know how many miles a pipe we have, we know roughly what year it is. With that information, we should be able to drive some sort of replacement frequency based on some municipal best practices, things like that. So if that was put on a spreadsheet, these dollars were put on that spreadsheet, and we could really kind of understand here, you know, how far are these dollars stretching, and what are we getting for it? Because the three and the two, I mean, it's a place to start, as council president said. But I really want to see where we go with it. You know, how does this really help us over time? And then my second comment, I know I kind of keep harking back on this one, but I want to make this, if this goes forward, I'd like to do it once. And then, this fee has an escalator or an interest rate to it, preferably 5% or so, so that every year, this is going up in an incremental value to keep up with just construction escalation, material escalation, things of that nature. So, those are my two comments.
Sir? Mr. Better?
Thank you, Mr. President. My concern, well, twofold. I would hope that we're not setting a fund balance that we want to maintain. These funds shouldn't have fund balances. They should just, the fees should cover the costs on an annual basis. There shouldn't be a fund balance that we want to say we want to have a $50,000 fund balance in here. That isn't the purpose of these funds. So I wouldn't be in favor of maintaining a fund balance there. And again, just to be clear and open with everyone, I agree with the president that these replacement projects used to be, or under current policy, are paid with special assessments. So this fee increase is shared by everyone across the city, and someone on the south end may be paying for someone's sanitary or storm sewer on the north end, and vice versa, someone on the north end may be paying for someone's on the south end. Current policy, we special assess those. So whoever's system is getting replaced, they're paying for it. And I understand this is a way to lower special assessments as projects are incurred. I just don't know if this is the right way to do it. Thank you.
Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. You're the accountant, and I'm going to dabble into your world a little bit. But when we're talking about fund balance, I tend to agree, like, we don't want to try to have a fund balance, but maybe, hear me out, we do want to, my worry is, with the language you said, is that we're looking at an annual expenditure in and out. And I think that tends towards short-term thinking, and what I think we want to try to do, and what Mr. Larson talked about, and I've tried to talk about, is longer-term thinking. So, I don't, as long as we don't just try to zero out everything every year, like, we can have, and maybe it's just an accounting thing, like, it's getting as, like, maybe you have a project fund within that that can have a balance for, you know, five years or something, that you might have to save up some money over those terms to be able to do some of these bigger projects or whatever. I just, I don't want to, I agree with you in principle, like, we don't want to have, like, we don't want to build up a fund. But what we do want is, we want to be able to fund projects over time, some of them which may cost more money in year seven, or year more, less money in year 10, or whatever. So, being able to have enough balance in there, and if you don't want to call it bottom-line fund balance, we allocate that to specific project funds, or whatever you want to call that. I don't know if that's a happy medium, or if that doesn't get to what you're talking about at all. Thank you.
Well, they've broken it into the increase into two parts. So, the first part, if we pick on the sanitary sewer, the $5 increase is $3 to cover costs and maintain funds, $2 is for replacement projects, and what you're getting at is that $2 for replacement projects. The $3 is to cover costs.
And I think, and to that point, like, I think you still have to have some cushion, because that operational cost is going to go up and down. So you don't want to zero it out, either.
Oh, I agree.
But the point isn't just to build that fund balance to a number that we have.
Right. I don't want them to say that we want to continually have $200,000 in this account. I don't think that's the purpose of this account.
Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, President. I just want to make sure that we're clarifying...
Uh, I just want to make sure that we're clarifying when you're, Clarence, when you're talking, you're talking about the improvement amount, not the actual sewage fund itself, which we have to follow the fund balance rules where we have to have at least 35% or five months of, of expenses in our account. So, correct, right, Clarence?
You are, are correct, yeah, but.
Okay. I just want to make sure that, that everybody knows we're talking on the same page. So you're talking about the improvement part, you don't want to have 200,000 just sitting in there and building that up and building that up.
Well, and I think the, the, the actual, just the sanitary sewer, the, the project part of it, if we take that out right now, if that's not even part of the discussion, state law still requires on enterprise funds to have a minimum fund balance in there?
Correct.
Okay. That answers my question then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
I have one.
Yes, Megan?
If this gets, um, goes forward in a resolution format for you guys to vote on, when you, uh, when do you want it to be implemented?
That will be, you know, like, as quickly as possible.
Then Clarence gets off council. No.
Okay. And I guess the reason, um, and the reason, um, Ms. Nelson is asking that is because for us to get notice to the, to water and light, get it into the billing and that, we do need some lead time. So if you're looking, if you look at.
Do we have to give notification so many timeframe before we increase it? Is there a period that we have to advertise that there's going to be an increase? Mr. Galstead? I know you're shaking your head no, Carla, but I want to make sure with Mr. Galstead.
I don't think so, but I, I, you're, you're making me go through the statute in my mind. I, I don't think that it is for this purpose. I think you just can set it on a year, you know, you can set it for whatever it is. It might be nice to, to, to citizens. Heads up that there's going to be an increase.
I guess what would be the wishes of Mr. Stordahl?
Well, I, I guess I, I could.
Looks like he's going to speak.
Okay. Thanks.
I couldn't hear Ron, what Ron was saying there.
Essentially, what I said was that legally, I don't believe that there's a requirement to have a public hearing or a notice to increase the sewer fund. However, it would be nice if we were going to do it to give the residents a lead time on when that rate was going to be increased.
And you were just asking Mark my opinion of that?
You are correct, sir.
Yeah, we could give them a lead time on it. What's your thoughts about as far as time, Carla?
Well, for billing, we just need to make sure, um, they have enough time at water and light. So that would just be the beginning of one month. So we couldn't do it in June, we could do it in July or August or anytime after that.
And I guess what I was, I wanted to elaborate a little bit on my conversations with, with the Public Works Superintendent Stordahl. Um, I don't want to speak for him, but I can just get, I'll convey the gist from what I've gotten from him in our conversations. I don't know that, that he's overly concerned as far as, you know, like, right away, the very first month available, I think he would think this would be very nice. It's something that he would like, like to have to, to be able to work with. However, if it takes, you know, if it's not implemented till the end of the summer or whatever, and start collecting, I, I don't think he would have a problem with that. I think he just would like to see it implemented versus, versus not. So, um, and I guess as far as the timing, yeah, I mean, um, July could be a good one. Um, we could get the, um, we could maybe even do, um, uh, something in the water and light bills as well to let him know that an increase would be coming. Um, so, I mean, if we, if we want to do a couple of month lead times so we can get the word out and get some feedback in, I, I don't think staff would have a problem with that at all.
Mr. Bitter?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would throw the suggestion that we implement it as part of the 2021 budget. Um, so implement it January 1st, 2021. And that way it would allow us to, whether we vote on it or however we vote on it now, we would allow staff to be able to go through the budgeting process and incorporate that into their budget presentations, um, go through the process, have it well documented that this is how it's going forward. I mean, I don't think, I think that there may be a need for some of this money, but like I said, I don't think there's any rush, like, I don't think we're, I mean, in a hurry to get it going. But that would be my suggestion is just treat it as a 21 or 2022 bu- budget item and start it the first of January.
Anybody else have an opinion?
Well, if it runs a little bit this year, they could see how it performs. You know, we have projections of what the monthly revenues will be, um, but it would be nice to see in real time what the revenues and expenses out of this fund will be, then going into the budgeting process for '22. So I could see a rationale for giving it, uh, some months actual running before it has to hit the budgeting process.
There's really not that much sanitary and storm on that project. So you're not going to save that much, so.
That is not the driving force. This is just, we decide something and then, and then it, it goes, it becomes active, you know, versus a long lag. I don't see the benefit of the long lag if this is the decision we make.
Let's do the last quarter. Anybody else have an opinion on when they'd like to see it started, if we, if it was approved?
It should certainly be on a quarter, whether it's July 1st or October 1st or January 1st.
I tend to agree with Mr. Demers. Uh, it'd be nice to have it, if we approve it, to let the figures through the budget then. I don't have a problem with that.
Carla and Jason, have you guys looked at the, how the impact would be on the budget now or have you guys even started that? I'm assuming to get to your number of what the increases were that you guys already looked at, the budget impacts of what is needed in, you know, so I, maybe your input from that, Carla?
Well, the improvement side, it, it's actually going to be, not be part of any budgeting item because that's separate, it's an improvements and, and Jason and Stephen have put together what those improvements would be, what's our special needs. So that $2 increase isn't actually any part of the budget process. The $3 increase is part of the budget process. And when I estimated numbers from the past with their 2020 actual, when I look at the fund balance, we're actually below that reserve of 35% or five months of reserve. So.
Sooner the better.
I wouldn't have a problem doing the last quarter. I understand what Demers and Bitter are saying. If we are below what we need to be at, I understand that, that maybe the action should be taken quicker than that. I mean, what's three, a couple of months going to do, but. Mr. Alms, you have an opinion?
Actually, I want to correct myself. That, that's not true. I was looking wrong on the spreadsheet because I'm trying to do that at the same time. So if, if you want to put it in with January 1st, uh, I'm okay with that. There is sufficient fund balance that we're looking at to cover that 35% or five months. So, sorry for the wrong, uh, answer there.
Okay with that, Tim?
I'm okay, whatever you want.
If we have a consensus, we will bring it forward for implementation, January 1st, 2022.
Thank you.
All righty. Move on to number six, discussion on permission and welcoming committee. Mary Gander?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. So, we did just start into this a little bit at our reports on the last Tuesday meeting. And of course, we're talking about people moving into our community from anywhere and getting acclimated to our community from everything, from, um, housing to employment to education, healthcare, transportation. Uh, many of them come with nothing much. They are refugees that have come from places with the clothes on their back and a few other things. Then plenty of others come to our area from maybe within the US or, or other countries. And so the whole idea here is to really make our community as welcoming as we can be. Beyond being friendly, we want to also, um, have systems in place that they can plug into, that they can tap into. Um, this effort started with us about, almost as soon as I became mayor. Um, Soria Driscoll, Decca Ali, Mike Colness with the school, they'd gotten a good start on all of this. And what they came to realize is they, they were really strong on the education piece and then helping out in these other areas, but it became pretty clear that this is, it is first and foremost, I think, about education and acquiring the ability to speak the language and write and mathematics. And then that turns into employment and then from there you can get into the housing and the rest of it. And so it, it became pretty evident that, um, as much as we need the school onboard, we also need the city pretty well engaged just to help coordinate all of this. And that's about the time that Mr. Gordy, uh, came back and approached and said, do you think we could handle this in the city in a fashion similar to how we did the charter commission? And, um, you had the council president, the city administrator, uh, myself and others, you know, met on a pretty regular basis about once a month to try to help to coordinate this. And I thought that sounded like a great idea. And Mr. Olsted has agreed to, to serve for that period of time. And so we really are looking at, um, oh, just so you know, to the folks who had a concern, I did email to you all the documents that, that Grand Forks has put together through about the last four or five-year timeframe. And, um, that absolutely is a roadmap for us. It's a roadmap for what all do these folks need when they arrive, you know, what are the services that they need? And then specifically within this community, who provides those services? And for us, it might look a little different. That is, the specific service providers may be a little different, but as many as possible. You know, some of them receive federal funding and they're really here to, to provide services to this whole region without respect to the state line. We'll identify those and of course, those will be the service providers that we go to. Um, some will be unique to us and, and some will be maybe just prioritized differently. If it's going to be healthcare, you know, one group versus another in our East Grand Forks area. And so we are, we are looking to make this kind of a two-step process. The first year will be a little more active with a larger committee of, say, 12 to 14 people, including Mr. Murphy, Mr. Olsted, myself, Mr. Gordy, some from the school. And, um, and then it would go for nine months or so. It could start, say, in September and run for nine months or so to do some of the rest of the front-end work. And then it could change into a standing committee of the council of about five to seven people also that would just carry forward and, and basically maintain what's been developed and making sure that, you know, if anything changes, we, we put that in and also making sure in an active way that we're accessible to new people coming in as their needs change and whatnot. And so that is the request, you know, before we got too far asking people to serve on these two committees, I wanted to make sure that we had the, the complete comfort level and in the input from the council, if there are any, um, direction that we're planning to go that seems not quite right, we'd take that. Um, and then before we get too far into the discussion, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. President, maybe the two representatives of the school could speak?
Yeah. That'd be great.
But that's, yeah, that's the vision that, that we have and then, thanks.
One thing, maybe I'll touch base for, on first, uh, what we talked about this last week was, you know, getting to this point where we talk about getting together for a couple of months, getting the, basically what we call a structure of how things will operate and how things we put together. I think that's going to be the biggest thing that we do to make sure that we have the structure set in place of who handles what, who's responsible for what, um, and make sure that they know their responsibilities and, and follow through on those responsibilities to make this thing, um, successful. If any part falls through, you know, you know, we're never going to be able to, you know, have a, take this and show us, to show everybody that we are a community that's welcoming, we have everything in place. Uh, I just want to make sure that if we're doing this, we're not, it's just not an idea floating around and then we have to scramble to look for things, um, that are available for people. And you touched base on, you know, what's available on this side of the river or on both sides of the river. That was one of the things that we talked about last week too, is my questions were, do we have stuff that's, people use on both sides of the state line and the stuff that's, of course, we all know that's, goes with Polk County or East Grand Forks City. So we, we know there's a difference, but I don't want to recreate the wheel. Um, I want to make sure that we complement what Grand Forks does have. But also I would like to see down the road that maybe both sides of the river are together and not apart because we are a community and I know that we've talked a lot about doing things together and working together and we have done in the past on a lot of projects. And I think, um, this is something we, we need to, I mean, get together and then hopefully we can work with them in, down the road. So if Dec or Soria want to come up and speak, if you want us to turn the mic on for them, Clarence or Brian?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for having us this evening. Um, I think the work for us, when it started with the community and schools work that we've been doing, we've noticed gaps in services. And we know that there's services, I'll give you an example, I'll give you a story right now. We have a, a student who is in dire need of, um, of residential care. There's basically 10 beds in our county. They're full. The only other service is in Grand Forks, which we can't access that because she's a resident in East Grand Forks. This is a student in dire need of help. So we see a gap there. Okay, that's one gap we've come across. Other gaps we've come across as we've been doing this work is we know there's, um, systems in place, our systems aren't talking to each other. So to me, this is another part of this work that we have to be doing. If we're truly going to be welcoming, we want to make sure when we send somebody somewhere that our systems are communicating and working in unison together to create the best opportunity for that family that is needed. Um, the other part that we've, that we have found is the gap in, um, um, finding, um, for sure what the needs are of the families. So we've been doing a lot of outreach. We've, um, hired success coaches that are reaching out to families to find out really what their needs are. So we've had a gap there as well. Um, so those are some of the things we're seeing that we know that we want to work together with the city to bring this to, to, um, to an opportunity for our families so everybody feels welcome and connected. I just love our, our brand, Life Connected, that's what we want and we want everybody feeling like they belong here. So that's really where the, that's where I come from, that's the passion I work from is, um, I want to make sure our kids have the best services in their, in our families and that everybody has an opportunity here to be the best they can be. So.
Thanks, Soria. Does Decca want to speak to the group?
There's new faces and familiar faces in here. I just want to introduce myself first. My name is Decca Ali. Um, the school liaison, Somali interpreter, Arabic, so I wear so many different hats in my job. Um, Soria and I, um, started this program a while ago and like, um, mayor stated earlier that we were kind of talking and talking and figuring out the best way we can put the community together as one, one piece of eye. That's what I keep saying all the time. And East Grand Forks and Grand Forks, we do have a same, um, familiar refugees, new American in, in both sides. And, uh, we do work with, uh, global friends who do accidentally jobs for the new American, whether it's, uh, educational classes, whether transportation, everywhere. So they, they are very amazing, the work they do, but we would like to work with them and we've been working with them. And there's a lot of needs in here, especially the two things that come up, most of them was the education, which is the key of everything because the education is the light. Um, with that education, there's no door will open for you. So as a new American, when you come here, example, you need to learn the language in order to communicate, in order to get a job, in order to establish the culture you're coming in because you totally come from the different culture. You need to learn how to approach the people, how to communicate it, um, the people you work with, you need to understand their culture status, another education and another challenge in that people face when they come here. And by the time you arrive United States, um, whatever, you're a doctor or teachers back home, it does not matter, that degree is done by the time you get the visa in United does not matter. That degree is done by the time you get the visa in United States. Um, you have to start all over. And some people, it's really challenging because the lack of the, all the, um, challenging they facing. So we're trying to figure out the center called umbrella, which is that umbrella is, um, like you said earlier, people will know where they're going to find the services when they arrive here in East Grand Forks. Oh, I need a job. Who should I communicate with? Or I need help for interpreter services. Um, who should I communicate with? Um, I need to find a job and who's the liaison for the job companies? Who's going to connect it with me for the jobs? Um, so that umbrella will serve so many different people. It's not only, when I say new American, I'm not only talking about Somalis and Arabic. I'm talking about each individual person, whether who was Native American or new American, they will find the place that they can go and, and go in. And they know that that person is the point. That's the phone number I'm going to call. If I need a school, oh, Decca Ali, this is her number. I need to register my kids. I need help there. I need job. So basically because the, those things, challenge we face is three things here. Language, housing, and employment. And with that language, with that language, those two are not possible. Maybe housing, but jobs especially. And we would like to keep our, um, families here to stay with us because there's a lot of jobs who need people. And, and Soraya and I will try and work on that and find someone who will be, um, for them. But without those, um, center and communication and connection and implementing and inclusion for our community and future for our kids to get to know each other culturally, it's not possible to have it, uh, environmental, healthy, growing community. Because I feel like, um, I've been here last four years, almost five years right now, and I love the city. Um, and I, I love the work I do for the families. But I would like to that, the things we challenging every year for the school system is we get new kids every year. Every year we get to know new family. By the time the year is gone, because the opportunity, they can't find it. The family say, we love East Grand Forks. We love the community that live with us. We love the school system, but the housing and the jobs are challenging. So, and if you guys have any question for me, then I can answer it.
Anybody have any questions?
I guess I'd, I'd say one more thing. Um, I love the focus that you bring. Number one, it's for everyone. Um, everything you've ever said for these last four years or so that we've met together, any effort that you want to be part of, it's going to be to the benefit of the whole community. And if we lift up one part of the community, but they're still separate, we've failed. Because at the end of it all, we are one community. And number two, I think we can come in, you know, and I don't mean to get funny about this, but from the political right or left, we're looking for education that puts folks into the job market. That's where they want to be. They have a really good work ethic and they want to develop those language skills that, that open the door for them to get into the job market. And that's where they want to be. And that's what I know of the people that I have, have come in contact with. They want to work. They want to help build this community. And, and I feel like a, a committee like this is going to help facilitate that.
Mr. Larson?
Yeah, just one small comment, kind of building on what the mayor and, uh, Decca said. Um, and I can only speak for, um, my industry, the construction industry, uh, but we're seeing a massive shortage of skilled and unskilled workers here within the region and the greater area. And, uh, I, I really think that, um, you know, there's a lot of opportunities out there for, for new Americans and new people to the area to be able to find gainful employment here. Uh, not saying that it's easy to connect the dots there, but I, I really think that throughout this program, if we focus on getting everyone to that step, that, um, that, that job on a construction site, that, that job throughout somewhere here in, in the area, I mean, that's really something to, um, work for as, as a goal, as people start to graduate and grow out of these social service programs. So I think that, that overarching goal of, uh, gainful, stable employment, good paying jobs up, up here in the area, they are there looking for people as well. So both, both sides of the solution are looking for each other. I think it's really up to this committee to, to align these goals and point them towards each other. Thank you.
Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just kind of, kind of taking this idea or this committee and trying to figure out what the deliverables, for lack of a better word, are, is in looking at what the Grand Forks roadmap has, they come up with goal after certain, whatever, they come up with goals. And each of these goals has like a lead agency or lead. How, what's the power of this committee to designate those agencies and are, at what point does the city have a say in what those policies are? I just, I'm looking at one, it's, you know, the lead agency is Grand Forks Police Department. Just wondering, at what point does this become a policy or a goal that then comes back to the city council and we decide that it, that the East Grand Forks, I'm not picking on the PD, but that, you know, this is one of chief's goals? Or how does that work? Or is this its own autonomous unit that says this is what, this is how the police department goes or?
I think with the next couple of months, as we go through this, I think that's what we're going to take a look at and go keep, look at what they have already and not, like I said, not recreate the wheel, but see what's in there that would be pertinent to the city of East Grand Forks, Polk County of what we should be doing and maybe talking with them, what is working, what is not working. Uh, I think in that, then trying to go through that process and decide if this is something that we should be doing or, as you said, do we have, is this a policy that actually we have to make a decision on of who's responsible for it? And that's where it comes back to me is that if we do this and we have these roadmaps set up, are these clear responsibilities of what's going on, that's what's going to make or break this. If we designate something that these people, XYZ is in charge of this and that doesn't, not working out and is not, you know, maybe, I don't know what word I'm looking for, but maybe is not, uh, maybe in top of the list of things they need to be doing. Um, so that's why I think this next couple of months, getting together and walking through all this and trying to decide of what it's going to look like is going to be very important. So.
Can I add something?
Sure.
I, I would add too, Mark, that it would have to be collaborative in nature. Like, we wouldn't want to assign something to, you know, to, to the chief here and, and that's what he, his, you know, now he's in charge of that. It'd have to be collaborative in planning.
Well, it's not the chief, it's the department. It's the resources of the city of East Grand Forks. And I guess I, I just wonder, at what point are we allowing this group to dictate the goals of these agencies versus what having the council dictate what the goals are of the, and not that, I'm not saying that they're not aligned, but there's only so many resources and there's so many, so many times, there's only so many things. So, and like I said, I don't, I'm not trying to find problems. I'm just, I look at the list of groups and we talk about new Americans, but I mean, there's, I mean, and the group keeps getting longer and longer of disadvantaged and missed or underrepresented and all these, I just can see this. I mean, where's the end of it and, and that stuff? So.
I would think that the majority of, of the deliverables, um, would be agencies that are probably going to continue doing what they do. They might tweak it a little bit, but now they are more known by the folks who need those services. Like Soraya said, there, the communication between them is kind of lacking just a little bit. And this could help to, to bring them all together in, in communication with each other. And some would be willing to tweak what they do. Um, for example, Northland has been doing adult English education for years. Maybe through this effort, we can come in with some childcare services that open the door to more people utilizing it. You know, just little things like that, that you could help coordinate the volunteers or whatever it might be to take a service that's already being done and just repackage it a little bit and make it better, you know, through the input that we would have from the community coming in.
And then the second, it's always a question, what, what's the, how is the work of this committee being funded? Or how is it, what's the?
Really, I, if there's going to be a budget impact, it would have to come back to the council. Really, this is a coordination. This is really a, a bringing together, a coordination, opening up the dialogue. If, if there's a budget impact, it would have to come right back to the council, which there may or may not be.
Anybody else have anything? Mr. Holmes?
Yeah, thank you. Um, Soraya, maybe you could answer this. Didn't, didn't you put together a committee, uh, of people in the surrounding area for this same purpose type thing? And did that not go anywhere? Or, or what happened there? Because I think I was going to be on that committee and I don't know if I ever heard anything about it. So.
Yeah, you were going to, Dale. Yeah. I think we ended up, um, looking at the, um, roadmap that Grand Forks had did and thought, instead of going through a whole assessment piece, um, taking that roadmap, taking those same people possibly and taking that and using that instead of going through just an assessment again.
So nothing had ever really come of the other one?
No, no.
Or you could say, this is a continuation of that.
This is a continuation.
There really is. I mean, the momentum that came out of that.
Repackaging.
Is going.
[laughing]
This has really a lot of the same feel, but it is going to be a little more broad. By coming into the city, um, it can be, the emphasis can change just a little bit, you know, towards transportation, healthcare, housing, employment. I mean, that's a lot of stuff that the city is already involved in. Yeah.
Yeah, like, and your, your questions of impacts of the city council and the city itself, I think that's, you know, what we truly don't know yet. And I think that's why it's going through this process here in this next few months is going to be what is brought back and discussed some more. So it's, it's nothing that's going to be decided by that group. I think it just can be recommendations of how we handle things and how things are provided. Anybody else have anything? Mr. Larson?
Just one comment here to kind of, um, um, response to your last comment there, council president. I, I think as we start to understand that the cost, that's, that's extremely important. But also, and potentially on the EDA side, we should be considering some of the projected, um, revenue increases to the city as well by, uh, improving and increasing, you know, the, the overall, um, wages that our new Americans are making here. You know, if, if we have a lower unemployment rate, if everyone's making more money, they're more gainfully employed, they're buying houses, paying taxes here in town. I kind of want to see both sides of this here to really, to really understand. And hopefully the state of Minnesota has some case studies, um, or some best practices that, that'll kind of help us to show what, what other communities have, have done and what's worked and what hasn't.
Thanks. Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Is he done? All right. Entertaining a motion to adjourn. Oh, move by Mr. Holmes.
Second.
Second by Mr. Larson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion is carried. Mean is adjourned.